Hey, good afternoon everybody, uh, good morning everybody and welcome to the joint meeting between the city of Fort Lauderdale City Commission and the, um, the Sustainability Advisory Board. We want to welcome all the members of the, uh, of the board to, uh, this meeting. Um, we have just three members of the commission here today, myself, Commissioner Glassman and Commissioner Sorensen. Um, uh, and so I wonder if, um, who's the chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board? You? Oh, yes, right here, David. Uh, David, do you want to take a, a roll call of your members?
Mayor, Mayor, I can do it.
You're gonna do it? Oh, I didn't see you there, David.
Hello.
Go ahead.
All right, Chair Blatner. Uh, Vice Chair Mead. President Carol Tanbury. President Kelly Charles. Wit- Whitney Dutton. Carol Ann Maza. All right.
Oh, previous number?
But not on the, but not on this, okay.
Uh, do we have a quorum of their board?
They have, uh, three of six here. They have half.
How many are on their board?
There's six total at the moment. They have, uh, five vacancies right now.
Technically, you, since it's a workshop, you're not making any decisions. It's probably not required to have a quorum. However, to the extent that, um, anybody is speaking on behalf of the board, um, you don't have that validation necessarily because you don't have a majority of the board here.
So the majority's not here today?
Apparently not, no.
All right, well, we'll just have a little fun then. All right. Uh, David, thank you for being here today and, uh, and members of the commission, thank you all for being here in the board. Uh, so tell us a little bit about, uh, what's on today's agenda to discuss before the commission. David? Is your mic on?
Is it on now? Yeah.
Yeah, it is on now.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is David Blatner and I'm the, uh, newly elected chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board. And to behalf of the board, uh, thank you for inviting us to participate in this joint workshop with you. As we all know, Fort Lauderdale's on the front lines of climate change and sea level rise impacts. In addition to the physical impacts that these stressors will also have, these stressors will also have economic impacts for our city and the entire region. Over the last year, the SAB has heard from several experts and has had multiple conversations on this topic. Our board believes it is important for the board, the commission, and city administration to keep informed on impacts of climate change on insurance and mortgage markets in South Florida, the implications for businesses and homeowners in the city, and the imp- and the potential impact on city, uh, tax revenue. Before we go on, I'd just want to introduce the fellow board members who could join us today. We do have Carol Ann Maza and Kelly Charles, who were able to join us. And I'd like to also introduce our former board member, Owen Kl- uh, Kilke, who's here today, who, uh, initiated the board's, uh, consideration on this, um, topic. And one last thing I'd do, um, you heard that we only have, uh, six members on the board currently right now. Uh, there are five openings. We encourage you to go out to your constituents and make some more appointments because we do have many topics that we'd like to cover. And the more input we have from the community, the better. So if you could, uh, recruit, we'd appreciate it. Uh, with that, I'd like to introduce our speaker today, Jay Neal. He's the executive chairman of the Federal Association for Insurance Reform, to present on the issues to discuss today.
Jay. Great. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Is this on? Yes. So by, by way of introduction, uh, okay. Yeah, my IT skills are... Uh, by way of introduction, uh, I'm a co-founder of Fair about 12 years ago. We're located right here. We're a consumer-centric, uh, unique organization that, uh, I guess I should go to the slide, that, um, deals with insurance public policy. You know, personally, I, I didn't put a bio on here, but, um, I am a blue collar kid from Dayton, Ohio. I have a, uh, served four, four decades, as we were talking, parts of four decades, uh, in the Army Reserve. Was a helicopter pilot. Uh, half of that time was during the Cold War, so this, this, uh, thing in Ukraine has, has got me, uh, you know, very disturbed. Uh, I, I also have an MBA, CPA, and a law degree. Uh, the, the, uh, MBA and JD are from Ohio State. Go Bucks! And, uh, but, uh, until recently, I, and, and the pandemic has lost my, my whole, uh, sense of time. It's past two years, it's like a blank. But, uh, until recently, I was the, the president of the organization, and then a few years ago, I became the chair of the board. We also, uh, we operate in, in Tallahassee and in Washington DC, primarily on flood, National Flood Insurance Program. In Tallahassee, I would say, it's fair to say we're an 800-pound gorilla. Uh, we have a lot of impact on, on insurance policy. But it's a very frustrating time to try to get anything done, uh, in the legislature. So, uh, I can't say we've, we've had a lot of successful initiatives in the past, but here recently, uh, we've kind of come up zilch. In Washington, uh, I personally, that's my kind of, uh, uh, assignment. I personally have met with most of the key senators or their staffs, mostly with their staffs. And, uh, we do have lobbying firms in both, both locations. Um, until recently in Washington, we used the Becker Firm. And now we have, uh, a firm whose name I can't ever remember. Uh, but anyway, uh, and then a few years back, uh, we started as a Florida association. And then as flood policy became more important, we got it, started getting involved in, uh, we've, we've done some testimony in, in, um, in Sacramento on earthquake. And, uh, we changed it to, to federal. And then, uh, I don't know, five years back, we realized that there were parts of what needed to be done that were really not political. They were, they were... So we started a nonprofit, the Fair Foundation, and I, I serve as CEO of that. So the, the three things that the pillars of the foundation mission are education, resiliency through mitigation, and closing the insurance protection gap, primarily with flood. Uh, and, and as Dr. Glassman said, you know, think about tying this to what the city should, should think of. I think those three are, uh, a big part of what the, uh, of what the city should focus on. The Florida property market, it's in a, it's in bad shape right now. And, uh, you know, just a very brief history. With Hurricane Kane Andrew, there are about 20 AM best rated, which is the oldest and the premier rating agency for insurance.
Hey, good afternoon everybody, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the joint meeting between the City of Fort Lauderdale City Commission and the Sustainability Advisory Board. We want to welcome all the members of the Board to this meeting. We have just three members of the Commission here today, myself, Commissioner Glassman, and Commissioner Sorenson. And so I wonder if, who's the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board? You? Oh, yes, right here, David. David, do you want to take a roll call of your members?
Mayor, I can do it.
You're gonna do it?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see you there, David.
Hello.
Go ahead.
All right, Chair Blatner, Vice Chair Mead, President Carol Tanbury, President Kelly Charles, Whitney Dutton, Carol Ann Maza. All right. Oh, previous member? But not on the, but not on this, okay.
Do we have a quorum of their Board?
They have three of six here. They have half.
How many are on their Board?
There's six total at the moment. They have five vacancies right now.
Technically, you, since it's a workshop, you're not making any decisions, it's probably not required to have a quorum, however, to the extent that anybody is speaking on behalf of the Board, you don't have that validation necessarily because you don't have a majority of the Board here.
So the majority is not here today?
Apparently not, no.
All right, well, we'll just have a little fun then. All right. David, thank you for being here today, and members of the Commission, thank you all for being here on the Board. So tell us a little bit about what's on today's agenda to discuss before the Commission. David, is your mic on?
Is it on now? Yeah.
Yeah, it is on now.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is David Blatner, and I'm the newly-elected Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board. And on behalf of the Board, thank you for inviting us to participate in this joint workshop with you. As we all know, Fort Lauderdale is on the front lines of climate change and sea level rise impacts. In addition to the physical impacts that these stressors will also have, these stressors will also have economic impacts for our city and the entire region. Over the last year, the SAB has heard from several experts and has had multiple conversations on this topic. Our Board believes it is important for the Board, the Commission, and city administration to keep informed on impacts of climate change on insurance and mortgage markets in South Florida, the implications for businesses and homeowners in the city, and the potential impact on city tax revenue. Before we go on, I just want to introduce the fellow Board members who could join us today. We do have Carol Ann Maza and Kelly Charles, who were able to join us, and I'd like to also introduce our former Board member, Kilke, who's here today, who initiated the Board's consideration on this topic. And one last thing I do, you heard that we only have six members on the Board currently right now, there are five openings. We encourage you to go out to your constituents and make some more appointments, because we do have many topics that we'd like to cover, and the more input we have from the community, the better. So if you could recruit, we'd appreciate it. With that, I'd like to introduce our Speaker today, Jay Neal. He's the Executive Chairman of the Federal Association for Insurance Reform, to present on the issues to discuss today.
Jay.
Great. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Is this on? Yes. So by way of introduction, okay, yeah, my IT skills are, by way of introduction, I'm a co-founder of FAIR about 12 years ago. We're located right here. We're a consumer-centric, unique organization that, I guess I should go to the slide, that deals with insurance public policy. You know, personally, I didn't put a bio on here, but I am a blue-collar kid from Dayton, Ohio. I have a, served four decades, as we were talking, parts of four decades, in the Army Reserve, was a helicopter pilot, half of that time was during the Cold War, so this thing in Ukraine has got me, you know, very disturbed. I also have an MBA, CPA, and a law degree. The MBA and JD are from Ohio State, go Bucks. And, but until recently, and the pandemic has lost my whole sense of time, this past two years is like a blank, but until recently, I was the president of the organization, and then a few years ago, I became the Chair of the Board. We also, we operate in Tallahassee and in Washington DC, primarily on flood, National Flood Insurance Program. In Tallahassee, I would say, it's fair to say, we're an 800-pound gorilla. We have a lot of impact on insurance policy, but it's a very frustrating time to try to get anything done in the legislature. So I can't say we've had a lot of successful initiatives in the past, but here recently, we've kind of come up zilch. In Washington, I personally, that's my kind of assignment, I personally have met with most of the key senators or their staffs, mostly with their staffs, and we do have lobbying firms in both locations. Until recently in Washington, we used the Becker Firm, and now we have a firm whose name I can't ever remember. But anyway, and then a few years back, we started as a Florida Association, and then as flood policy became more important, we got it, started getting involved, and we've done some testimony in Sacramento on earthquake, and we changed it to federal. And then, I don't know, five years back, we realized that there were parts of what needed to be done that were really not political, they were, so we started a nonprofit, the FAIR Foundation, and I serve as CEO of that. So the three things that the pillars of the Foundation mission are education, resiliency through mitigation, and closing the insurance protection gap, primarily with flood. And as Dr. Glassman said, you know, think about tying this to what the city should think of. I think those three are a big part of what the, of what the city should focus on. The Florida property market, it's in a, it's in bad shape right now. And, you know, just a very brief history, with Hurricane Andrew, there are about 20 AM Best rated, which is the oldest and the premier rating agency for insurance companies. They lost about 20 companies, and so AM Best said, "See ya." The legacy carriers, the State Farms and Nationwide, those guys said, "See ya," they went on a glide path out of Florida. At the time of Andrew, they had about 95% of the market. They now have less than 20%, and the Florida carriers that grew up out of that have about 70% of the market. The rating, there is a rating agency that kind of came to the rescue, because AM Best wouldn't rate companies anymore, called DemoTech. Full disclosure, I went to business school four years ago with their founder, and he's on our Board, he was a founding Board member. But he's rating companies, and right now, what you have, and just in the last few weeks, you've had two or three companies that say they're not going to write more new policies. You've had two companies go belly up, turn in the keys to OIR, which creates impact, because those claims have got to be paid by the Florida Insurance Guarantee Association, which means there's assessments, so we all pay for that. There's also huge increase in reinsurance costs. Half of your premium dollars that you pay for property insurance go to reinsurance, and the majority of that business is out of Bermuda. And they don't have any antitrust laws, so they can get together and try to do whatever they want. Now, the supply and demand curve normally counters that, but lately, lately, the reinsurance costs have gone up, which means, what? We pay higher premiums. We've also had litigation off the charts, and a lot of fraud. And, you know, I'm a consumer guy, but the fraud is for real, I've experienced it personally. I had a roofer come out and tell me that, you know, I had extensive damage and 30, 40 broken tiles, and then a roofer that, a little later in the afternoon, came out and said, "No, you don't have that kind of damage, it's a different kind of damage." But long story short is, that's all driven cost, and so what's happening is, and then South Florida is sort of known as the epicenter for the fraud. So the choices, this is supposed to tie to the impact on the real estate market, where the choices are diminishing fast. And Citizens, which at one point, which is the residual carrier, crappy coverage, crappy culture, when you set up a culture that's designed to keep people out, you don't really, you're not really set up to take care of your policyholders. And so they have several things that they've cut, like liability is typically 300,000 or more, it's 100,000 with Citizens, there's a $10,000 water limit, and it's just, if it's the only thing you got, you know, and you need to buy a house, it's fine. But, you know, I said two, three years ago, before the pandemic, that if we didn't take some legislative reforms, we were going to see rates double. I was wrong about that. They've tripled. They've tripled. My personal, and the mayor actually was the attorney when I bought my house seven years ago, I first paid $2,400 a year, my premium now is $8,700. And in fact, that all kind of snuck up, so I only have, my loan is about 40% of my property value right now, but my payment went up $600 a month, last month, because of insurance. Property taxes actually ticked down a tad. So it's a mess, and there's some reforms that could be done that previous legislators set up, but there's just, there's some special interest, ironically, I'm just going to call them out, State Farm, which has lost policies and redeployed a lot of those, a lot of those assets to buy portions of reinsurers, you know, fights us, and in the Florida legislature, if you're a Republican, you want a Chamber of Commerce A, if you're a Democrat, you take pride in a Chamber of Commerce F, and the Chamber of Commerce always weighs against us. In fact, they say they're going to double the grade, the allocation for, you know, people voting for refund, reforms. And I'm not going to get into the, it's the Florida Hurricane Cat Fund that is the mechanism. I'm not going to get into the mechanisms, but let's talk about flood insurance. I think there's some reforms needed, I'm going to cut to the third bullet point first. The claims process, Hurricane Sandy taught us in New Jersey and New York, horrible. And so there are senators like Menendez from New Jersey, who's insisting on claims reforms, and that's important. The pricing glide path was we go to risk pretension 2.0, and I heard there were a lot of questions on that earlier. There is a great paper that the Congressional Research Office did, December, last December, it's about 20 pages, but it's an excellent comparison between what is NFIP now and what is NFIP later. And then there's continuous coverage. You know, if you read that paper, you'll see that there are a lot of people grandfathered into certain rates. I won't get into that either, you know, I'm a more generalist, but we want to reward insurance consumers that have flood insurance, whether it's with the private market or with NFIP, and as long as they've had continuous coverage, they're not going to be penalized. Because right now, what you have is, you have a company, Security First, they don't do a lot of business in South Florida, but they have an addendum to your homeowner's policy, which for 90% of the time, it's cheaper than NFIP, and it gives you better coverage. But a lot of agents are hesitant to move, because if that goes away, and that insurance consumer loses the grandfather protections, then they can't go back to NFIP. So we want continuous coverage, and it was in the, there was a bill out of the House that was unanimous, I can't imagine getting unanimous vote, 60, 60 votes, or 59, I think, one was missing, out of the House Banking Committee, Maxine Waters and Pat McHenry from North Carolina, and it had continuous coverage in it. But right now, there's so much going on, that they just keep kicking the can down the road, which they've done now, I don't know, 16, 17 times. It's recently been extended to the end of the fiscal year this year. So, you know, I hope, and then, you know, I've known the Chairman of the Senate Banking Committee for nearly 40 years, who's Sherrod Brown from Ohio. He was my advisor when I was in the Ohio Student Association, and they're very nervous about the role of the private market. We've had exponential growth in Florida with private flood, and I'm going to lean on to that, you know, everybody knows we have win mitigation discounts, right? You put a roof on, you add windows, you get, you get a credit, there's a file rate, and then there's a table that says your premium is lowered this much, and it can be as much as 75, 80% for protecting your house. Well, what we've learned over the years is that mitigation requires incentives, and it makes the most sense when you mitigate against all the risks, plus energy. So we don't have that with flood right now. So our aspiration, and I think there's a later slide, our aspiration is that we think, I think there's 1.6 million homes in Florida uninsured for flood risk that are vulnerable to storm surge, and that's not covered, unless you have a company that offers a flood addendum, but that's not covered. So that's a, that's a, you know, that's a real problem. So aspirationally, we think we should go from between five and six million flood policies outstanding nationwide to over 40 million, and we think that the private market is a necessary component of that, as is the NFIP. So any questions on the insurance part before we go on to the next?
I have a question, I have a question, over here, over here, over here, the mayor.
Oh, the mayor, okay.
So what, where do you see the City Commission participating in any of this conversation? I mean, it's all interesting, but I mean, as far as this government is concerned, we have no impact on setting rates or anything like that, that's all done at the state level.
Right.
You know, we don't have any ability to, to create or enforce building standards, because that's at the county level and the state level. So where do you see our role in any of this?
Well, I have, a few slides later, I cover that, but I really think it comes down to education and advocacy, and working closely with county, state, and there's so much dysfunctionality right now, that I really don't have a good answer for that.
But didn't the state just pass a law that says we can't advocate, we can't talk about anything like that, we can't print any materials? I believe they just passed a law like that, that doesn't even give us the opportunity to educate in that way, although they were not able to address the insurance issue, or some of the other issues that we think might help people or the environment, but they did pass laws that basically do not let us express ourselves.
I'm not aware of that. So let me get back to you on that. Now, I'm not staffed today, so if somebody could help remind me to what I said I would do, because I will forget as soon as I walk out of here. I'm not aware of that. I don't see how you could possibly be prohibited from educating people on the necessity to buy flood insurance, on the mitigation, on, you know, you can't set the building codes, but you can encourage people and show them how to do code-plus building. You know, I think, I think of the, of the house on Mexico Beach that was built to code-plus, which is standing with very minor damage, and everything around it is devastated. So, you know, but where, you know, it reminds me, I don't know if anybody saw the internship, I watched it the other night, where the guy's trying to learn Google Helpline, and he says, "Oh, it's like teaching a kid the alphabet." He said, "No, it's like teaching him a single letter." And that's really where we are. You know, we sent out all our team, ask your neighbors if they have flood insurance. Now, I have a neighbor who is multimillion dollars, doesn't have a mortgage, and I said, "Do you have flood insurance?" He said, "Don't we need it?" And so there's just a lot of education, and I don't know what they could do to prohibit you from, from trying to educate your citizens on that.
Well, you'd be surprised.
But I will get, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not surprised at all by what the legislature does. In fact, I'm appalled by what they do and fail to do, but, so, any other questions on the insurance part?
Thank you, I'm not very technological.
Don't feel bad, it took me, I had to get staff help to email the PowerPoint to Glenn. Everything's changed, right? It doesn't work the same.
Yeah, so my name's Kelly, on the SAB, with the NFIP flood insurance, isn't the limit on that $250,000?
It is.
And what would private flood insurance be?
Most of the private policies will match your Schedule A, meaning your coverage value. Now, I, you know, I have a townhome that's, I don't know, $900,000 in real value, but the rebuild cost is only like $350,000. So if I were to get a policy with an addendum, or if I were to get a private policy, then typically, the coverage would be $350,000. And there's one deductible. With NFIP, you have, I don't know, you have a deductible for your contents, you have a deductible for the building itself, and, and so I hope that answered your question.
Yes, but I think that's one of the other problems here, especially Fort Lauderdale, like you mentioned, your neighbor has a multimillion-dollar home, $250,000, $350,000 is very small in relation to property costs and rebuild costs here.
It is indeed, but let me, let me point this out again. We have had, you know, huge growth in real estate values in, in this area, but really the bulk of that is for the land. So you don't have to rebuild the land.
Right.
So, you know, you, you, you know, 250 may not cover it, but it's not a difference between 250 and a million, it's a difference between 250 and 300, 400,000.
Sure, okay.
Okay, should we move on to mortgage stuff? Yes, Nancy, or Dr. Glassman, sorry, she's giving me that look. You know, the mortgage is just, I wish I had more answers, and we deal with, one of the primary things that we're doing is that we have a lot of companies who've had, in Florida, who've had a tough time, and let me give you a case study. In Broward County, we have two of the five public property insurance companies in the state, FedNat and Sunrise, and Universal, which I think is in Fort Lauderdale. In any event, Universal's done okay, although their stock price is down. FedNat has been hammered. They have a stock, you know, worth $1.25 or something like that. They've brought capital in, and they're capable of paying claims, but in terms of a rating, they're really not on the same level as, say, the Universal. So we were trying to differentiate, and right now, Freddie and Fannie only recognize a DemoTech, again, which rates 70% of the Florida market, A rating. So we're trying to get FHFA, and I'm, oh, it's on this slide, which is the custodian since the housing crisis for Freddie and Fannie, and everybody knows what a GSE does, right? You buy the loans, you package them, sell them to bondholders, and they don't recognize a B rating, whereas they do for AM Best, for Standard and Poor's, and for Fannie Annie Wood does, for a rating agency called Crawl out of New York City. Now, so we're working, and then we have all the studies, independent studies, and we're trying to get FHFA to direct Freddie and Fannie to recognize a B rating, because otherwise, you know, the DemoTech is in Ohio, I mean, they're not, they're not responsible for our political situation, they're responsible to follow their ratings methodology, because that's what they filed, that's what's recognized, and if they, right now, if they downgrade FedNat to a B, the office will come in and liquidate them. It's 160,000 policies, they'll liquidate them, because they're not recognized by Freddie and Fannie. So that's one of the things we're working on in the front burner. But on the mortgages, there's just a, it doesn't make any sense, you know, and there are some things that I see, you know, looking at policy, that could really screw us up down the line. You know, one is, one observation is, they've already tightened up on condo underwriting because of the collapse in Miami, so they're, they're, they're looking at stuff like, what are their reserves, when was the maintenance done, and so they're really looking, but yet, you know, they don't require earthquake coverage.
And no reform laws passed in Tallahassee to deal with that either. Nothing.
Nothing.
It's all dead, nothing.
Well, one of the things they want to do in Tallahassee is allow insurers to cover actual cash value on roofs, which we, we got beaten, but it, the insurance industry's, you know, feet, or, the thing that they want to do first is create a limit, reduce coverage. You know, so I remember, gosh, how many years ago was it, in Citizens, they were trying to do a $10,000 water limit, and one of the Board members, who's a good friend, made a motion, and he couldn't even get a second, and now it's in place. Plus, the glide path that we've had for years, which says you can't go up more than 10% a year, it's creeping up to 15%. But yet, they don't want to reform the CAT Fund, which is the mechanism that they've been given, which could cut 10% or more out of the cost of what it, what it costs to insure, and that would go, it has to go with admitted carriers, it has to go to the insurance, to the insurance consumer. They've got to get an actuary and file their rates every year, I mean, they're held to strict standards. But back to, back to Freddie and Fannie, you know, we have 21% of the nation's real estate value is in California. I think the latest numbers, and we work with the California Earthquake Authority on litigation and other issues, right now, only about 13% of those people are insured for earthquake.
Well, what are the issues in Florida?
Well, I'm going to tie it to Florida in a minute, Mayor.
Okay.
And then you've got the Cascadia, sub, I never can remember the word, but there's a Casc, there's a fault that goes from Northern California up to Vancouver, and Google it, or go on YouTube, it's fascinating, but they had an earthquake in January of 1700. And, um, Google it or go on YouTube, it's fascinating. But they had an earthquake in January of 1700, and it's supposed to happen every 30 years, so we're 322 years past that. If one of those events happens, that will wipe out, here's your tie-in, Mayor. That will, that will wipe out Freddie and Fannie. They have a huge amount of exposure to uninsured risk along the West Coast. And, um, uh, and so that's a factor. If that happens, you know, you, you have privacy, uh, you, or not privacy, you have private market, uh, you know, could be the default, depends on who's in power in, in Washington. You know, for years, the, the, the Republicans wanted to get rid of Freddie and Fannie. And they really do, even though they're not directly, uh, uh, insured by the federal government, there's an implication that the federal government will step in. So, um, that helps keep rates low. Now, I mentioned, you know, if, if, there aren't a whole lot of people who could just shrug and say, oh, my mortgage payment went up $600, right? A lot of people that would really hurt. So that, that's directly related to, you know, real estate costs in South Florida. If you can't get insurance, uh, and you won't need a federally backed loan, you know, good luck. So, uh, so I, I mentioned the condo underwriting tightening up. What I foresee is that as model, models en- improve, um, and somebody says, well, this area is going to be underwater in 20 years, that they won't no longer write a 30-year mortgage on that property. That they'll, they'll, they'll lower the term eligibility, and that knocks a lot of buyers out of the market. Now, right now, we got a bunch of foreigners, a bunch of cash buyers, people coming from New York, you know, but that's not going to last forever. Uh, we shouldn't count on it lasting forever, you know, if, if it did, you know, great. But, uh, we also see.
Uh, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Um, there are areas in our city that are predicted to be, uh, underwater within 30 years, and we're still writing 30-year mortgages. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that policy has been applied yet here in Fort Lauderdale or Broward County.
No, there, there is no policy now. I'm just trying to be a crystal ball, saying what might happen.
Oh, okay.
Uh, you know, uh, the reality is, you got, if people are ready to buy the bonds, and if Freddie and Fannie can continue to kind of be in their little cocoon, you know, they, they, it's hard to get them to change anything. Uh, then they'll keep, keep running 30-year loans.
Well, I know, because, uh, Dr. Gasman keeps scaring the pants off me every time I talk with her about how we're going to be flooded. And, uh, and, um, and, and these are in areas where multimillion dollar homes are being, some for cash, but a lot of them are being financed under typical, you know, 30-year mortgage. So, um, someone's not talking to somebody here. Most of these homes are going to be flipped anyway. Very few people do hold on to their houses for 30 years. But, um, the practice is not yet applied here. I can tell you that.
Which is, which is why, which is why I covered earthquake, because if, if, if the GSEs, Freddie and Fannie take a major kick, uh, in losses, then that opens up the door to FHFA or a bondholder community to say, oh, you got to tighten this stuff up. Now, if I, if I had my way, I'd say every new federally backed mortgage should have everything, flood, earthquake, voluntary risk, fire, all, all of it. Uh, we can't just say every mortgage has to have that, because there's, there's not nearly enough capacity in the reinsurance market. If we did it on the new loans, you know, we might have to pay $10 or $20 a year for earthquake insurance. But I'll tell you, if Californians have to pay for earthquake insurance, that's going to lower our rates. Why? Because a big part of our rates is reinsurance. And if the reinsurers can diversify geographically and by risk, then they'll charge less for, for the wind horrendous rates of wind reinsurance that we pay.
Well, do we pay, do, do Californians, uh, subsidize our wind insurance, as you're suggesting that we're subsidizing their earthquake insurance?
No, it's the other way around. Um, we're subsidizing their lack of insurance through higher insurance, reinsurance rates.
I get that, but I mean, they, we don't suffer earthquakes here, but we do suffer the wind, im- wind impacts. California doesn't suffer wind impacts, but they do suffer earthquakes. Now, are, are they paying a premium for our, for our wind mitigation, or?
No.
They're not?
If there was a requirement, though, that all risks for a federally backed mortgage are covered, then that would really ease, th- that would lower the risk substantially for reinsurers, which means they would, you know, they might pay $10 or $20 for wind risk a year. Uh, and we're paying $10 or $20, I'm just making that number up. I don't know what it would be.
Okay. Are we paying $10, are we paying any amount for, for earthquake?
No.
We're not?
We're not.
That was just hypothetical.
That's a hypothetical that would, would sort of even out the market, and it would take the risk off, uh, the GSEs that we have now, which is substantial. Um.
This is all, this is all related to profit. How can they?
Of course, it's related to profit and greed.
Right. So how can, because the reason why the legacy insurers left Florida after Andrew is because they were quite content to be collecting premiums every year and not having to pay anything out. Then as soon as something, as soon as the day arrived that they had to pay something out, they said, well, we're not, this isn't as appetizing for us anymore, so they moved on, and that's how Citizens was born. So, like you said, so, um, you know, so.
Well, in 92 and Andrew, modeling had really started. It was new still. Um, and, and so you had companies like Nationwide. I had one division that had 80% of the condos within a building, and then another division that did the outside of the building. Well, that's just not good diversification. So they basically just fled. They just fled the state. They have 49 other states and Lord knows where else they write, uh, a- a- and, uh, you know, I hope that clears it up, but, but one company in particular, State Farm, um, you know, has, has continued to dominate in Tallahassee, and they basically blocked reforms to the CAT fund, which could help alleviate rates in a sen- in a sensible way. Um, the other thing I've noticed here in the last couple of years, you know, it seems like we make a big mistake, there's a catastrophe, and then a generation passes, and we do it all over again. So the private market has come back in and is starting to ride, uh, to, to write product, because the greed, they want to sell the bonds. So they come back in and they're starting to write, uh, uh, you know, not subprime maybe, not on the level of 2008, but they're starting to write loans that wouldn't fit Freddie and Fannie's standards. Uh, it's still small, uh, and at first, there was a very tepid, uh, that's the second time I've used this word today. Uh, there was a very tepid reaction from the bond market, but that's all changing. You know, people trying to find, uh, return in, in a, in a low-rate environment. So here are my policy recommendations, and they're vague.
Okay.
Okay? And I will look into, um, Mr. Glassman, I'll look into, uh, I haven't had a full briefing yet of what happened in Tallahassee. They just convened in Monday.
Jay?
Um.
Jay?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm down here in front. Did, did the Gulf states have the same kind of problems that Florida's had since Andrew? We haven't had an event like Andrew in 30 years, but the Gulf states are getting pounded in the last 15.
They, they have the availability problems, but their litigation dwarfs what ours is. Uh, so I, you know.
Has their property values aren't as high?
No, they just have less litigation, you know.
Because we're litigious.
We are. I mean, I've seen models where a storm hits the western part of the Florida Panhandle and then hits Mississippi and Louisiana, and you take the, the model and apply it to Louisiana, Mississippi, and it, it, it's basically all in target. You look at, at western Florida, and, you know, the litigation's two, three times higher.
So it comes back to litigation reform.
Well, one of the reasons, well, there needs to be litigation reform, but one of the problems is, you got to balance it. Now, I don't think I remember saying this, but you know, we're, we're a unique policy organization in that we try to put every state quota group around the table. So I have members, half, better than half of the policies written in Florida are by a member company affair. But we also have trial attorneys who sue insurance companies, and then we try to have an equal balance of defense attorneys so that we can all kind of get together without the lobbyists and find narrowly tailored approaches to solving the problems. So, and that's very tough to do in the current political environment.
The balance of power in Tallahassee has changed since Andrew, but yet this problem is not, has, has, has not changed.
Well, the real change came, I don't know, again, I've lost track of time, three or four years ago, when we started having all these events, Michael and Irma and, uh, you know, if you have, if you have a fire and your house burns down, you have one deductible. But if you have a, a, a ki- kitchen flyer, and then you have water damage, and then you have three or four of the things that happen, that's five deductibles. And that's essentially what's happened. It's the same with the, with the carriers. That deductible is, is is a part that they have to pay before the reinsurance kicks in. And that's, that's created then, you know, you go back to the other slide, but that, the litigation, the fraud, um, and then reinsurance cost. Now, we created the CAT fund to stabilize the reinsurance market, but the current legislature refuses to use it.
For any legislature, okay.
Um, so I would just, education, advocacy, mitigation. Uh, I don't know what else to tell you. Mayor, that's, that seems to me kind of, kind of lame, but, um, you know, there is one substantive thing, and I know one of the, so, uh, there's some people that have a problem in this program. But if you, if we added flood mitigation and seawall improvements, uh, as authorized, uh, improvements under the Property Sex, Clean and Energy Statute, you know, people have a lot of equity right now that they could use to make those improvements, uh, that necessarily maybe, that just gives them another quiver in the arrow. I mean, they might do a second mortgage, they might pay cash, whatever. Yeah, we'd also like to see, uh, that statute, uh, added authorized improvements for septic tanks, which is a minor problem here in Fort Lauderdale, uh, and sprinkler systems in the older high-rises. That, that's just a death trap waiting to happen, you know, and, and they keep kicking that can down the road every year, too. So I wish I could tell you, I, I'm actually more hopeful about Washington. Once, you know, we settle things down, I'm actually more hopeful about Washington making meaningful reforms than I am about Tallahassee. So, um, any, any questions about that? I know it wasn't a lot of, of, uh.
Any questions so far?
Nope.
Okay, now, I'm going to close, uh, by saying, you know, follow fair. And one of the reasons is, we did a six-week, uh, virtual conference at the end of 2020. Uh, and the panels were fantastic. I think Dean was on one, and, uh, excuse me, the mayor was on one. And, um, if, i- if you link to me on LinkedIn, um, those are being posted. So you, you, you read a little summary, you hit on the YouTube link, and you can watch those. You don't have to watch all of them. But there's some fascinating stuff in there. Uh, there's a panel on cost benefit, if you've got houses you need to save, because it's still a rise, but, you know, improvements cost so many millions per hour. Who, who makes that decision? You, you know what I'm saying, right? And, and how, and how do you, how do you get there? The other thing that I'd like to say is, is, uh, and then, of course, I listed my email address. Uh, uh, the other thing I'd like to point out is that if you're a policymaker a- a- and you're trying to figure out, you know, how to get to people, you got to understand how people think. So there are two books that I'm going to really, uh, say you should read, and they're like 12 bucks on Amazon. Isaac Storm is about the flooding in, uh, 1800 in Galveston, and how they came about, and, and it's a fascinating book. It gets in a little bit more detail as you go through, but it's a fascinating book. And then after you read that, The Ostrich Paradox. And it really explains how we fail as policymakers because we don't take a long-term view. And I gave Nancy a dozen copies of this, so she can give them out to, to, uh, we've got more, Nancy, if you, if you need them later. But the, the author was the, was the keynote speaker to our conference that I mentioned, um, you know, Building a Culture of Resilience. And, um, I, I found it fascinating. Uh, and, you know, I've been doing finance and insurance for, got close to 40 years now. And, um, I, I just think this explains it very beautifully, and it, it's not a, um, you got to study it a little bit, but it's not a, it's not a hard read. So, um, with that, I'll take any remaining questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions with regards to this interesting, uh, discussion? Obviously, you know, there's a lot of application to Fort Lauderdale and, and South Florida in general. Um, and as you know, the city has pitched in in this effort to try to respond to climate change and the impact it's having on our coastal properties by, um, we've, we've passed ordinances requiring elevated seawalls. We ourselves are elevating our seawalls, the ones that the city owns. Um, we continue to, uh, encourage, um, you know, um, just better development practices here in our city. Um, some properties are being raised. For example, we have a, a site on, um, on the beach called Bahia Mar, which, uh, if, if, uh, at some point, a, an agreement is made with the current leaseholder that they will elevate that site, so it will not be prone to flooding in the years ahead. Um, and, uh, and so the city is very sensitive to all of this. We were spending hundreds of millions of dollars uh, on stormwater, uh, mitigation, trying to ensure that flooding is minimized in our city, whether it be due to rising sea levels or to storms. So all of that, we're very aggressive at trying to respond to climate change. How that impacts our insurance rates, hopefully in a positive way. Um, but again, we're often the victim of other communities that are not doing what we're doing. So if we're, if we're lumped in with, with other cities in the state that aren't doing what we're doing, then unfortunately, we're not seeing the immediate, uh, positive, um, dividends from the efforts that we're making. But, you know, we're certainly doing our best to educate, educate not the people so much as our legislators who need to understand what we're trying to do to, to try to, you know, to work with everybody else to minimize the, the impact of rising sea levels. Now, the other thing that we can do as a community is to start to reduce our carbon footprint, which is what's creating rising sea levels. Now, I know we're just a speck in the sand when it comes to Mother Earth, but if we pitch in and start uh, undergoing best practices, minimizing, you know, our carbon-related, uh, activities, then hopefully we will, as a world, holistically, be able to slow down the, the melting of our ice packs in, in the North and South Poles. Anybody have any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Dave, is there anything else you would like to discuss?
No, I, I don't have anything to add. I just want to thank you for, for having us here, and I thank you for your closing comments there, Mayor, because these are the topics that we work on each, each week, each month. It's good to know that we have the, the city's attention and, uh, efforts to, to fight these important issues and to work towards solving them. And you're right, we are only one small speck on this planet, but everybody working together, hopefully we can achieve these important goals.
All right, great. Well, thank you. Anyone have any questions of the committee? All right. Thank you so much. We really appreciate everyone being here today. Thank you for your work.
Please appoint more people.
Okay. The meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.